Bonnie, could you call the roll?
Here.
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 Thank you. I'd like to welcome all of you. It's nice to have a full house. It costs you nothing to come, so it's a great thing. We're pleased to have an audience of this size, and we look forward to presenting our wonderful students some really fine honors of honoring their accomplishments. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is right there. I will lead us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you wish to register your attendance, there is a registration sheet in the hall, and you're welcome to sign that if you'd like. The second item is approval of minutes. We have the regular session from October 27th of 2025 and the executive session from October 27th of 2025. Bonnie, have you received any corrections? Does anyone have any corrections at this time? May I have a motion to approve both sessions?
So moved.
Second. Aye.
Abstain.
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay. It's funny, with Willard gone, it always sounds like we're not quite done yet.
Yes.
The next tradition of excellence is the upcoming item, the recognition awards presentations. Item one from the high school and the middle school north, boys and girls cross-country. Want to introduce anything or just?
Yeah, yeah, sure. So we're lucky to have Mr. Carley here, representing both middle schools. This is a first for us, having an opportunity to recognize some very talented middle school runners as they've just joined the state organization, and we had some kids go to state, so Mr. Carley's going to recognize those students. Ladies and gentlemen, here's how this is going to work. The board's going to make their way out and stand out front. Mr. Carley's going to brag about you for a little bit. Then, when he calls your names to come up, start down here with Mr. Choi and shake everybody's hand. We'll get you a certificate, and then you stand in front of the really fancy blue curtain so mom and dad and all the paparazzi can take as many pictures of you as we want. And then, board, quick little favor for you, before, when they're done, don't sit down just yet because I'm going to have one more thing I'm going to ask you to do before our runners make their exit. So I'll pass it off to Mr. Carley. Who is it on?
Good evening, Dr. Barrett and members of the Geneva School Board. I'm honored here tonight to recognize what we believe is a historical achievement for the middle schools, Geneva Middle Schools. The first ever Illinois Elementary School Association, IEESA, state qualifiers in both boys and girls cross-country at the middle school level. This is also the first year that the middle school, either middle school, has competed in the IEESA cross-country, making this accomplishment even more special. The IEESA State Cross-Country Meet was held on October 18th at Maxwell Park in Normal, Illinois. Geneva Middle School South had one boy state qualifier. Geneva Middle School North had one female state qualifier. And Geneva Middle School North had a boys team that qualified for state also. The North Boys Team captured the first place at the sectionals and went on to earn an impressive third-place finish in the 4A State Meet. I would like to extend my gratitude to Taylor McInnis, our A.D. on the campus of the middle schools for enrolling both middle schools in the IEESA program. I also want to thank the Geneva Middle School North coaches, if you guys want to come on up, Angela Rago, Tushar Nakam, and Jake Austin for their dedication and support of our student athletes. We'll begin by recognizing our Geneva Middle School South state qualifier, Grayson Ott. Grayson can step forward. Now Geneva Middle School North's female state qualifier, Maya Leanne, who finished 26 out of 221 runners at the state meet, 27 out of 221. Now we'll move on to the boys' state team, who placed again third place. We'll start with Jacob Calvario, who finished first overall out of 222 runners in the state meet. Next is Gavin Anderson. Gavin couldn't make it tonight. Elliot Wagner. Evan Best. Danielle Dempsey. Black Lynn Derringer. Owen Connect. I don't think Owen's here tonight. Nope. Jonathan Landau. And Evan McGowan. Congratulations to our cross-country runners. We're incredibly proud of you and all your hard work and success, and we look forward to cheering you on in the future middle school years and you eighth graders. We look forward to seeing what you're going to do in high school, so thank you.
Thank you guys very much. All right, board, you got to go stand in front of the finger. Right in the middle.
Are we dead center?
Have we got our certificates right? Are we going to get the superintendent? It's board member day. It's board member day. All right.
Thank you.
Can you guys compete with that?
Oh, do we need to put the thing up? The curtain back up?
No, no.
Okay. Oh, yeah, thank you. This come in our goodie bag?
Uh, this was something last year's goodie bag or something.
Someone was thinking last year. Do you have your kid coming? Yes. Let's see which one is yours. I love it.
We, the kids of Heartland Elementary, want to invite all of you to make a difference with us by collecting aluminum pop tabs.
Pop tabs may be small, but they make a big difference.
The Ronald McDonald House charities use the pop tabs to keep families close to their hospitalized child.
Now let's talk about how you can help.
Repeat after me. Spread the word.
Spread the word.
Spread the word by telling family, friends, and everyone else that you're collecting pop tabs for the Ronald McDonald House.
Repeat after me. Start collecting.
Start collecting.
Use your little house that we will help you build today to collect pop tabs.
Repeat after me. Fill our HES fish tank.
Fill our HES fish tank.
When your house fills up, send it to the Heartland or drop it off. We will add them to our fish tank collection. We are excited to see how many fish tanks we can fill up with all your help.
Now who wants to build a Ronald McDonald House and make a difference?
Oh, I do for sure. Yay!
They're going to call and ask each of you guys to help them build their own pop tabs so that you can keep it home.
Super fun. Mrs. Bozinski, you didn't tell me there'd be a quiz. Yes, thank you.
Help us here. You help Mr. Bozinski, and how about you? Can you help me with this one? What should I do first?
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming. We're very excited about your project. Great work.
Thank you very much, and you did that so nicely and quickly, too. That's really sweet.
We will collect those pop tabs. Bye, guys. Thank you so much.
Well, now we've gotten down to a normal audience. Thank you very much.
Still special.
Still special audience, still a special audience out there.
Item three on our agenda is Board Members Day, but I think we've covered that.
Not quite. I have to say, thank a board member, everybody.
Oh, okay.
This week is Board Members Week, and today is, actually, what day is, what's today's date? It's the end of this week is actually Board Members Day, but I wanted to take an opportunity to just thank our board. I'm going to have some fun facts to share in my superintendent's report, but just officially, thank you, everybody, for all you do. It's yeoman's work, and a lot of people just don't know how much time and care, and honestly, care, I think, is the right word. Kind care goes into this, so thank you very much for that, and I'll share some fun facts in a little bit. There you go.
Wow. Well, thank you.
Fun facts about you. You don't know what I've got. You don't know what I've got, do you? No, I'm kidding.
We're probably going to find ourselves content curious in a little while.
Which you will. So let's see. Next is Content Curious. Mrs. Sims is about to connect on the P.E. Content Curious, you remember that we talked about this earlier this year. We're going to have a few presentations throughout the course of the year from educators across all levels in our district kind of highlighting the work that they do in different content areas. So three awesome members of our P.E. department are here, and they're going to talk a little bit about what they do in their department across our district. Hard act to follow, guys, hard act to follow with the little ones, but I know this crew, they can do it. I know they can do it. We're very excited to hear from you. So, Mrs. Sims, I'll let you get started.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm, sorry, I'm getting that connection here. Excited to have, as you said, Dr. Barrett, three members of our physical education department here representing our elementary, middle, and high school-level physical education staff and courses. And I am not, get out of the presentation, but sorry. I am excited to share with you their, sorry. Now it's disconnecting me again. Technology's great when it works. Obviously can't do two things at once here, well. Excited to have them here this evening to talk about what it is that they do at their levels as well as what it looks like for a Geneva student that matriculates through kindergarten through 12th grade. And as Dr. Barrett shared, this is also what we will be talking about with another content area this year before the end of the year, and then that will continue going forward. We thought it would be important to share with you as the board, some of these content areas and, again, that view as they go forward through our system, so. See if it works this time. Fingers crossed. Yes, success. Okay. So with that, it's my pleasure to turn this over first to Mr. Graham. He's one of our physical education teachers. He works with the students at Williamsburg Elementary School. I would also like to share that Mr. Graham is also one of several, like several of our educators who gives back to the profession and has presented at national and state conferences. So I'm pleased to have him join us today to represent the elementary physical education curriculum and kind of what students do in those first six years in our school. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Graham, and then you'll turn it over to Ms. Chanel afterwards, and then.
All right. My name is Mike Graham. As she said, I teach.
Have to be close to the microphone, Mike.
Elementary Physical Education at Williamsburg, and today I just wanted to quickly give you an overview of some of the things that we do in our program, kind of what the kids experience, and just highlight some of the goals here. So, real quick, obviously, when you think of physical education, it's what you would probably come to mind is a lot of the skills, the games, the activities, all the different motor patterns, and then manipulative skills that the kids learn. We really focus on exploration, exploring, and a variety of different activities and different movements. I always thought getting into physical education that this would be really what it is that I do. I play games with kids all day. This will be great, but as I found out quickly, I do a lot of social skill teaching, right? Sharing, taking turns, you know, resolving conflicts, all these things, cooperating, working together, playing fair, all of those soft skills that, you know, kind of support what the kids are learning in class. I think that's a really, really important for kids to develop early on. I know as, you know, as I was, when I was a kid, I did a lot of, you know, playing outside. We would go outside after school, get home, and we'd play outside till the lights came on. Call us in for dinner. We'd go right back out after dinner and play till it got dark. And you don't see that as much nowadays, so, you know, there's opportunities for kids to be active, but we really developed a lot of social skills through play. We made our own teams. We solved our, we reft our own games. We solved our own conflicts. We kept our own score. All of those things that, you know, kind of went into that play aspect when I was a kid, I tried to bring a lot of those things into the curriculum that I teach, and a lot of the other elementary teachers that we have do the same. Obviously, we touch on health awareness. We don't go super deep, but, you know, just basic concepts about our heart and our lungs, our muscles, our bones, those kinds of things, and obviously, we want it to be fun and engaging. If kids are having fun and they're equating that with movement, then we're doing a great job. And then the final thing is developing physical literacy, and that may or may not be a term that you're familiar with. It's relatively new, but I'm going to talk a little bit more in detail of that in just a second. This is all well and good, but if you don't have a good why behind what it is that you do and why you do it, then, you know, sometimes you can just show up for work every day and go through the motions. And I came across a quote a while back that really struck a chord with me about why it is that I do what I do and why it's so important, and I wanted to share it with you. And it says, "Children who possess inadequate motor skills are often relegated to a life of exclusion from the organized and free-play experience of their peers, and subsequently to a lifetime of inactivity because of those frustrations and early movement behavior." If we don't get this right as an elementary department, if we don't offer kids the opportunity to experience success at their level, whatever that may be, we are setting them up to fail. They're not going to leave our program and want to continue to be active outside of our class. And so by allowing them to find success at their level at whatever activities interest them, I feel like that's a huge step in the right direction to get them to find avenues to be active. And that kind of brings me back to the thing that I'll wrap up with is the physical literacy cycle. And this is basically what it is in a nutshell. We really have to have kids develop skill competence, which is, you know, a variety of different skills and activities that we do at the elementary level. We expose them to that, allow them to explore with various equipment and things like that so that they start to feel good about what they're doing. When they have that skill competence, that's what's going to develop their confidence, right? And when they start to feel good about what they're doing and what they can accomplish, that's when motivation goes up. That's when risk-taking goes up. That's when they're going to be like, oh, I just did this. I want to try this now because I know how to do this. I want to take it to that next level. And because they are experiencing success and are motivated, they're going to be more apt to participate in a variety of active outlets outside of school. I only see the kids twice a week for 30 minutes, you know, and there's only so much I can do in that time. They really have to grab a hold of something that they experienced with me and take it beyond the walls of the school and find those avenues to be active out in the community. The more they participate, the more competence they gain in skills, and that cycle just continues to go and go. So that's kind of a brief bird's-eye view of what we do at the elementary level. Really try to instill that movement and those skills with the kids, develop that social, that social skill component is super important. And, you know, based on having fun, being engaged at their level, and experiencing success is a big part of what we do. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ashley. Ashley teaches at the middle school. She's going to share a little bit with you about some of the things that they do in their program, so, Ashley?
Okay, so I have to start off saying I did my student teaching, and I was split at Western and then at Williamsburg. So I got to student teach with Mike, so this is just like a cool moment to be up here in the district, talking with all of you now. Okay, so my name's Ashley Chanel. I teach at South, and so I'm here to talk to you about middle school P.E. I'm also representing North, too. We do things just a little bit differently, but obviously, we still have the same goals in mind. So Mike started off talking about the why, and that's like a big thing that I want to hit for the middle school. When they come, when the kids come to middle school from fifth grade, right, they get P.E. twice a week. They're used to having recess every day. Extra recess is kind of a benefit. So they come into middle school, and they're traveling from class to class to class. And like our sixth graders, they have P.E. at the end of the day, so they are like, they are really looking forward to that movement when it comes to the end of the day, like they are so jittery and excited. So that's just still a really important piece for them. They need that time to move around to kind of have that little social piece with their peers. And then as middle school P.E. teachers, we know that like they have built those foundational skills, so they do come in with confidence, but you start to get a little bit more specific when you get into middle school. Like the kids are like, oh, I'm a volleyball player, or, oh, I'm a basketball player. And so whether we're in those types of sports or not, we want P.E. to be a positive experience. So like as a department, we try to form those relationships with the kids where it doesn't matter what sport we're in. We're being that smiling face with them. We're welcoming them into the gym. We want them to be there, whether it's their favorite thing or their least favorite thing, like we want to know, or we want them to know that they're safe in our space. And then again, just working towards that goal of being well-rounded, you know, lifelong movers. So that does come with that physical, cognitive, and then social, emotional pieces. All right. So I kept mine simple, but there's lots of pictures. So we have lots of pictures from over at South. So we have five goals as far as the middle school goes. The first one is skill refinement, so they do come in with those like success pieces from elementary school where they have the, they're small-sided games. We take those skills and we turn them like into actual sport experiences for the kids. So that might be like they're going through an actual soccer game during class, or they're participating in a championship hockey game. So that kind of thing, so they're getting like a little bit of that sport experience. We're also trying to introduce new activities to the students, so like this year we brought in golf for eighth grade because we know that that's like a growing game. So we found a way to get golf clubs into our curriculum, and we. So we found a way to get golf clubs into our curriculum and we rented them and we got them in and it was a great hit. We did pickleball before it was cool and now the kids are like all over. Yeah, exactly. We're trying to be, we're trying to be. So we do different types of teaching too. So we do co-taught classes. So that might be like an entire team comes to us at the same time and their teams are coming from different classes within those. And then we do have individual classes as well. So the kids are getting a good mix there. And then we actually at South, we just got the GAF grant for new heart rate monitors. So we're really excited to learn how to use those and like start incorporating that into our curriculum in January, I think is when we're getting those, right? Okay. So that's going to be really exciting. Oops, sorry. Okay. So the next one is sport rules. So I put PE version, shout out to all my Swifties out there. Can't help it. So with this, it's, it's site-specific rules. So, and it's designed with safety in mind. So like in soccer, we're not allowing the kids to slide tackle because that's going to lead to something bad. Or if we're playing like flickerball, ultimate frisbee, we're asking the kids when they're defending to back up a step to allow that success of like throwing the ball to a teammate, those types of things. So that way the still, the kids are still getting that success, but it is more of like a actual sport-like, game-like experience. As far as teamwork and strategy goes, so this is where the kids are working together to write, to pass the ball to score a goal. And when we're in our cooperative challenges unit, it's not really sport-based. It's a challenge of trying to cross the gym with this much equipment and they have to figure out how they're going to work together that way. With that, we're also emphasizing like being a positive teammates. We're getting a little bit more of that social emotional piece in there because the kids never want to walk out of the gym feeling defeated. Again, we want it to be a positive experience for them. And then the last thing that we do is we have the kids work with people who have different backgrounds and different beliefs. So whether that comes from your own class or from someone else's class, the kids are always on teams with different people. So they're having to work together and problem solve and find those pieces. From a personal responsibility piece, they're going to eight classes a day. It's a lot for middle school to, middle schoolers to remember what they need to do. So this is the thing from sixth through eighth grade, we're reminding them, hey, you got to take your clothes home on the weekends. Hey, we have a test coming up this week. You need to make sure that you're finding the study guide, make sure that you're playing the koo-hoo so that you know when the test is, you know, the questions, that kind of stuff. So that's a constant thing as we're going through and it's fun to see them kind of grow and that responsibility piece grow as they work their way through middle school. And then the last thing is that we do an introduction to health. Our health units are about three weeks long throughout the year. And so each grade we kind of hit that way. And then we do a cardio unit where they're getting another piece of that health in there. But in seventh grade, they do a drugs and alcohol unit and they use the project alert curriculum with that. So it's just an introduction to what drugs are, how they work in your body, are they good or bad? We're working on decision-making, that type of thing there. And then in eighth grade, it's more of like a mental health stress slash stress focused curriculum with the idea of like, hey, you're going to high school next year, like it's going to kind of level up there. How can you manage things that way and kind of help prepare you for high school? So thank you so much. And I'm going to turn it over to Scott Henning for the high school level.
What is the story behind that shark costume up on top right?
Alrighty. Thanks for having us. Really appreciate it. It's the first day of basketball practice today, so forgive my voice. Some fun pictures. Dr. Law, that's Phoebe. We took her on the high ropes course. Phoebe's in my leadership class, so I thought, thought I'd throw a picture in of Phoebe climbing our high rope. So she really enjoyed that. I'm Scott Henning. I serve as the wellness department chair, which is PE, health and driver's ed. High school PE is, in my opinion, an absolute blast. I'm grateful to work with a great staff. Outside of the content we have, they're wonderful people and they care about kids. They build relationships and I just love to brag about them anytime I can. So wanted to start with that. Fitness, no matter what course, and you can take a plethora of courses, which you know about, I'm going to talk a little bit about, but fitness is the backbone of our curriculum. Doesn't matter if you come in as a freshman, team sports, all the way up to, you know, our lifetime classes. We have a new class, walking for wellness, which has been a big hit. But no matter what activity or what unit we're doing, fitness is a big backbone of our curriculum. Moving, our, our lessons, our daily lessons are engaged with, you know, our skill-related components, our health-related components, which is important for students as they go through our scope and sequence and obviously when they get ready to graduate from Geneva High School. Sophomore year, they do take a, a personal fitness class where we start talking about an individual fitness plan and we, you know, we tailor it to each student. It could be for students that just enjoy working out. It could be for our athletes as they, you know, really start to refine their skills and maybe think about college athletics. A lot of, we're blessed to have a lot of athletes that are, you know, they go on and participate in, you know, athletics out after high school. Lifetime activities, and you have a few pictures up there where, you know, we mentioned golf earlier, that's been a big hit. Mostly in our upperclassmen classes, pickleball, big hit, badminton, golf, archery. That typically happens junior, senior year. The next three all go together. It doesn't matter what class. And we really challenge our students, especially as they get ready to graduate from Geneva High School, to think about, you know, choices, decision-making. We, we have a leadership class, Phoebe's in, where we, we are, it's really focused on, you know, leadership and helping kids. Students that take the leadership class have the opportunity to serve as advanced leaders or peer leaders where they're working with, you know, younger students, which I think is just fantastic life skills for students outside of the, the physical activity and the learning, the, the different sports and rules. And then just as students are getting ready to graduate from Geneva High School, you know, our goal is, we know they're not going to like every activity. We know they're not going to like every sport. We hope they find something to keep them healthy for a lifetime. That could be going to their college workout center. That could be inner murals. That could be, you know, joining a health club when they're in law school, whatever the case may be. But I really am grateful again to work with staff that expose our students to a variety of activities, make them feel welcome, safe, be willing to try something. We know not every student unfortunately loves PE, even though we love PE. But when they walk across that stage and receive that diploma, we want them to feel comfortable choosing the activity, fitness-based, sport-based, variety, combination as they start their, their next chapter. And I really believe our curriculum at the high school does that. So any questions for any of us?
I just had a quick question. At the high school level, how do we focus on mental health since we know that's a big focus for our high schoolers? We've seen that come up in some situations over the past few years?
Yeah, a lot. We, we incorporate mental health days where we just take a break. We were, we've been working with our student service department. We do calm classroom where we start each class period, not every day, but I'm doing it in my leader's class, five or 10 minutes and we work on relaxation, breathing. I really truly believe and we have a lot of high achieving kids at Geneva High School. We want PE, it's not a blow-off class, but we want them to take a break. We want them to feel comfortable. We want them to have fun. We want them to, our PE classes sometimes are pretty big. We want them to enjoy working with their classmates or maybe meeting a new peer. But, you know, we do things throughout the, the semester where we, we embed mindfulness and yoga and Pilates, some of those non-traditional fitness activities where it's just not, you know, cardio-based, where we are focusing on social, emotional and mindfulness. But that calm classroom's been a big hit. So, great question. Well, thanks so much for your time. Would love to have you guys over at the high school. I'm sure they would love you to have at the middle school and elementary, you know, PE's a great time. So thanks again.
Thank you for the opportunity to allow us for, to share the first course, Curious. I would like to thank our three representatives for being here today and thank them for showing, you know, from kindergarten through fifth grade with that, you know, skill development to the application of those skills to specific sports. And then as they get to the high school, for that ability to, you know, apply those if they choose to go out for something athletic. And then even more important, the work that they do to ensure that our students are overall healthy and well. So thank you to our speakers tonight.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it and we appreciate what you do. I have fond memories of PE going way back. And in the active lifestyle department, both Paul and I are cyclists and we ride in the summertime, two or three days a week and enjoy it a lot. Next is Todd Latham. He's going to present the proposed 2025 tentative year tax levy for the what's time?
Well, I was here last month.
Thanks PE speakers while Todd's connecting and Mr. Lane for that moral support in the back. We appreciate you. We appreciate you.
All right. Good evening. So this is the second or the third phase of our levy process. So this is the 2025 tax year levy. It's receivable in 2026. And so as you recall, I came back here last month to talk about the draft and what it might look like. Tonight's the tentative. And then next month in December, we'll have the hearing and then we'll have the final levy that we can adopt and put on file with the county. Okay. So a lot of the presentation's the same, so I'll just go through that. There's two new slides that I want to point out and just emphasize to the board. So again, these are the components of the levy process, the equal assess valuation, new property construction, the property tax extension limitation law, the impact of the consumer price index on our levy process, our max rates, our tax rates, our extension, our revenue recapture and our truth in taxation. Those are the components that make up our levy process. And a little bit about the EAV. Again, it's the property valuation after the county and state equalization calculations are performed and it shows just growth that we capture as a district. The EAV totals multiplied by the approved tax rate per 100 EAV to arrive at our extension. Again, this is our rate-setting EAV history with the levy year, the rate-setting EAV and the change over the prior year. And you can see we've had quite a bit of growth the last few years with our equal assess valuation in the Geneva 304 community. Our new property, last I looked, the new property's not changed. So as you recall, the bottom was 15.6 million last year. It's about 12.2 million this year. So it's slowed some of the growth within the school district boundaries. And again, this is just a little bit about the law, that the tax cap is 5% or CPI, the consumer price index. And the limitations is applied. So each year I get a confirmation from the county of what that tax limitation is and that's what we apply to our levy process. Here's the CPI for the last several years from 2014 to 2024. The good years were in '21 and '22, if you look at it that way, for the levy it was. And then these are the funds that are subject to it as the tax part of that. The cap funds are the education fund, the special education, our operations and maintenance, our transportation, our social security, our MRF and our fire prevention and safety. Those that are not capped are our bond and interests, our working cash, which we do not levy in, and our revenue recapture, which is set by the county. I don't have any control over that. It's, it's a factor of the board review and some of the other factors that end up at that amount that the county provides. And this is the calculation of the limiting rate. So again, it's the prior year estimate, extension times one plus a lesser of 5% or CPI divided by the total EAV minus new property construction. This is a little bit of our limiting rate history from the total rate and the cap and the non-cap levy areas. So those are the same slides as last month. And a little bit about our historical requests. So the request is what we submit to the county. That's our ask and then the actual is what they confirm after everything is verified and calculated. And then it determines what the district receives. These are our tax receipts. So this slide has been updated, so we're still looking at 2.9% with a 5% max cap. The estimated EAV is $2,139,835,080. It's a 9.61% increase where the prior year. I mentioned our construction is still the same, that estimation comes out at the end of the year. So it's set by our townships and then it's submitted to the county. That's 4.87% is our cap levy, so that did increase from last time. And I'll explain in the next couple of slides how that occurred. There is a 0% increase to our bond and interest, which is how we pay off our debt. And now our new estimated tax receipts are $109,223,000 and that is $4,378,920 over the prior year. So this is the slide I gave you last time, which was our draft. Most of our information is down on the bottom right, which is our cap levy. At that point, we had 3.9%. There was no requirement for truth and taxation hearing, even though we hold one every year for transparency. Our bond and interest levy did not change and our draft was $108,142,811. This is our tentative, so you can see the change on the bottom right over here. Our cap now is $94,414,069. That increase is now 4.87%. There's still no truth in taxation required and the bond and interest is the same. And after the bond and interest is applied, the estimated new tax increase is 4.19% over the prior year. So there were some changes to this. Mostly they're just some higher estimations to make sure that we capture all the property that we can. And I'll explain a little bit about this in this slide. So one of the concerns that I had in establishing the levy, I increased the amount that I levied for special education programs. I also reduced some of the retirement levies in Fund 50. Those are IMRF and our social security. And then we also have an amount that we will need for our life health, safety, permit. But the biggest factor is, is if you keep in mind my earlier conversation about the fact that new construction is not capped. So I raised the levy to get the most that I could out of the new dollars. After that's done, then the county will apply the limiting factor of CPI, which is 2.9 to the rest of our cap. And then it basically lets us get, mostly we can't have new construction at this time. So it's a very small amount. We're talking 12 million out of over a billion dollars of EAV. So it's not the full amount. It's more than it was last time, but it really was focusing on that bottom point of getting those new dollars from our new construction and then letting the CPI apply to the rest of the cap funds. It's a little strategy. That's really all it is. And then remember next month, we'll come back with our truth in taxation. We'll be doing two things. We'll be posting the tentative levy on, which will be moving to a final levy. If the board is good with all that information tonight onto our website. We have to post it there for 30 days and then we'll put a notice in the paper for the truth in taxation hearing. Allows our board members to give comment, allows the public to give testimony. I will go back through our reserve funds at that time for compliance with the law. And that'll allow us then to get to the point where the board can hear the recommendation of the finance committee at next month's meeting and then the board can, if they so choose to adopt the levy, I will then place it on file on the district's behalf. Okay. Questions on the levy?
I just had one question.
Yes.
The levying more dollars for special education programs, is that because like there's a lack of federal dollars coming? Like I know that that's been something that's come up a lot. Is that where that's coming from?
It's just looking at what we spent last year and just increasing the levy in the area more in line with the cost of special education.
Thank you.
I don't want the regular education to outpace the levy increase with the special education, so I want to make sure I continue to increase that as well. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. The levy will be presented at the December meeting. And Dr. Barrett, strategic planning, goal one?
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity to process this with you. We've had a lot of conversations about our facilities and about, you know, our class size experiences at the elementary level and making sure that we have, you know, reasonable, equitable and sustainable class sizes across the district. So we've got some more important conversations coming up about our facilities and our capital needs and all that stuff here in the coming weeks and months. And so we thought it was important to circle back to this particular topic, our facility capacity analysis that we conducted at the And so we thought it was important to circle back to this particular topic, our facility capacity analysis that we conducted at the end of last year, and kind of put a bow on some of these conversations because we need to be able to take that next step on some other important conversations. So, you know, obviously, you recall that with our strategic plan, that goal area one is talking about our enrollment and staffing and making sure we're rightsizing that as our enrollment declines and all that stuff. So what we kind of talked about last year, you know, we had our demographic study. We conducted a capacity analysis of how we're using our facilities. And the question combined coming out of all of that was how do we best achieve those goals, again, of reasonable, equitable, and sustainable elementary school experience in Geneva, right? So the kind of critical questions when we look at this, and again, I know the board has had an opportunity to talk about this a lot. But we, again, I think it's important for us to put a bow on it here today because of some of the future conversation that lies ahead. So one of those questions is, what does that capacity analysis tell us about the efficiency in how we're using our buildings, right? And then the other big question that we knew was floating out there, right, was is there a need to balance enrollments across the district to improve or increase that efficiency, right? I think that's, we've known with our enrollment declining and some imbalances in enrollment across the district. That was something we were needing to think about. So what was the timeline in all this work, right? Obviously, we established our strategic plan officially, starting in 2024. We conducted that demographic study where we saw declining, but then pretty much stabilizing enrollment. With, quick caveat here, unknowns of some new potential developments that are coming down the pike, right? So we conducted that in the fall of last year. And as you know, we continue to update that data now each year. And we're in the process of doing that again right now. We then also conducted this capacity analysis in the spring where we looked at how are we using our buildings? How has the use of them, our buildings evolved over time because of programming, because of staffing, because of the way things have changed? The other big thing we did was we changed our elementary class size targets to build more consistency in the elementary experience across the district, even with some of those other variables that we have. And then we conducted some critical facility evaluations. You know, we're doing that this year. And this is kind of why, what we're doing this year is why we need to talk about these two things one more time today. We've looked at the conditions of our facilities, and we're going to be talking about those up ahead here. You've heard, we've talked a lot about this new development out in LaFolks. And we know we have important programming considerations in terms of what types of programs we offer in the district and that our community desires from us. So that's kind of the timeline that led us here. You'll remember, because we had an opportunity to talk about this in some great detail at our retreat last year. We looked at, these are last year's numbers. I wanted to keep them for consistency's sake. You know, we looked at our enrollments and our average number of grade level sections per school. And we used that along with the amount of rooms and spaces in our building that our architects helped us review to look at how efficiently are we using our buildings, right? And so when we looked at this, we saw a few things. One, if you look at just the enrollment, there's some variables, right? There's kind of a wide swing in terms of what our elementary enrollment is. And that means we have some three-section schools, two-section school, a four-section school, right? We see some variables in there. And then, when you look at our class size capacity, what you see is generally pretty high, like, efficiency, right? You see pretty high efficiency in the 70 to 90-ish percent. The variable that you see there obviously is Fabian. On one hand, it would look like Fabian has lower efficiency. And that is because it's our smallest pure elementary school enrollment, right? And so we have the fewest number of sections per grade there. But also, the important factor then to consider is Fabian hosts the Geneva Early Learning Program, right? That's our preschool program. And when you factor in that GELP, which is an awesome, robust program, when you factor GELP into that, all of a sudden, our efficiency in terms of the use of Fabian climbs up there too. So you see the use of Fabian as a building is pretty high, right, among the highest in the district in terms of how we're using that building right now. So, you know, when we look at all this data and try to break that down, you know, what does that tell us about our usage efficiency? Well, first, even though we have some difference in enrollment, we're utilizing our buildings relatively efficiently, right? We're doing a pretty good job of that, especially with GELP and housing GELP at Fabian. Two, again, adjusting those class size targets at the elementary have really helped establish more consistency. One of the worries about our efficiency, excuse me, I apologize for that. Prior to this was the fact that some of our class sizes felt different across the elementary schools, and then that didn't quite feel equitable. And so what we've done, I think, as a district with those class size targets, has really helped build in some more efficiency and consistency across the district. Another thing that tells us and that we know, GELP is a strong and robust program. Again, that's our early learning program, our district-run preschool. That's housed at Fabian. It enhances our efficiency at Fabian, and it's a valuable program to our community. And the other thing that we need to remember is that there are still some unknowns regarding that LaFolks development, right? We don't know exactly what's going to happen there in terms of the impact. We've run some analyses and we have some good ideas, but there's a lot yet to be undecided or yet to be determined as, you know, if that's even gonna happen. If it does happen, what the homes are going to be like, who's going to end up moving in there? So there's a lot of variables there. So, you know, when we think about all those facts, we think about this data down here, a couple of things to think about. You know, if you look at this chart down here and you see the threes and some fours and some twos, and then these numbers, 70% efficient to like 95% efficient. The only way to kind of make that kind of perfectly efficient and consistent across the district would be adjusting our boundaries to make six modestly sized schools. And it would require, because of how these numbers shake out, moving probably some pockets in each of our current school boundaries, right? You'd probably have to move folks in multiple boundaries in order to make six schools that are in that kind of 70 to 85% efficient, right? So that's a big lift. I think one thing that maybe people thought about in some of the early conversations about this was, well, maybe you just move a boundary here, here, and everything's perfect. That's not how this would work, right? You'd have to move people across the district. And what you'd be gaining, what you'd be getting is, you know, again, that efficiency of around 70 to 80-ish percent, which we already have generally across the district. So that's one consideration. That would be a big lift and something to consider. Another is that we really need to evaluate our long-term plan for the Geneva Early Learning Program, and we've started to do that. You know, we've shared some information about that. But we've really got to figure out what is the long-term plan for that, the facility needs for all of that. Because obviously, that plays into our efficiency. And if something about that is going to change long-term, we've got to formally designate that plan because that would then be the impetus to have some of these further conversations about efficiency in our buildings. Does that sound right? Makes sense? And then, again, lastly, we're going to learn more about the implications of this LaFolks of Camden Hills development in the coming weeks and months. And we need to be prepared to adapt to that. So given all of that information and what lies ahead for us, you know, what I'm here to say is I have a few recommendations. First, our recommendation at the moment is we should maintain our current boundary structure for all neighborhoods that currently send students to Geneva 304 schools, okay? So right now, given our efficiency and how we're using those facilities, given what we know about our demographic study and who goes where now, we believe that we should maintain that current structure for the time being, for the foreseeable future. As we have that, what we think we need to do is keep working to determine the long-term facility needs for the Geneva Early Learning Program. And again, there's conversations ongoing and forthcoming about that because that's going to be the big lever in there if we're going to have to have some more of these conversations. And then last, I do think one thing that is going to be important for us and for the board to consider is I do think the one thing we should be thinking about is determining the most appropriate attendance area for any new students that could be generated by the LaFolks of Camden Hills development. You know what I say right now, maintain the current boundary structure for all neighborhoods that currently send students to Geneva 304 schools. Right now, that development is out there. There's nothing out there but cornfields right now, right, or fields or trees and whatever. So I think we should have some thoughtful conversation about what's the most appropriate area, boundary area, that that would attend. And we could have some of those conversations over the course of this year while we're learning more about if that development's going to come online and what kind of students it's going to generate. So I think these are the three big important recommendations that I think we should be thinking about going forward as we're going to start looking at our facility conditions and needs going forward. So, fair enough? Questions? Thoughts?
One question. So as we're trying to determine the most appropriate attendance area for the LaFolks Camden Hills area, do we want to do that holding that we will not reboundry? So like, should we say, step one is we're not going to reboundry? So where could we fit them without reboundring? Is that, like, are all three of, is that true? Is that like a truth? Does that make sense how, what I'm asking?
Yeah, I think, I think that's the way we would do that for now, yes. Because I think these second two also kind of go together, right?
Right. That's what my thought kind of was. But I think that will help as we have our facilities conversation to know that even with a new area coming in, we still want to maintain the current boundaries.
Yeah. And I also think what's important to know is both of these things, they're kind of a chicken and an egg thing a little bit. But the potential development, either way, kind of gives you a long runway as you think about what's going on with the early learning program, right? So one thing I think we can do is you can look at that potential development as like a time horizon of, well, when we think this is going to start to generate X number of kids, that kind of gives us, okay, this is about how long of a runway we have to determine and have a great plan in place for what's going to happen with GELP. So that those two things can kind of go together. Does that make sense?
I think so. Because it's not going to be like we're going to have an extra 300 kids coming online day one. It's a phased approach, so that gives us time to work it out.
Correct, exactly.
I see what you're saying. Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else?
The demographic study that we did last year.
Yeah.
How many years out did that look?
So that went out, it technically went out, I think, 10 years. But the best data, the strongest data in it is five years because it used birth data for the region and it correlated. You know, that birth data, we could get really sound projections, you know, over the last 15 years. When this many births happened in this year, this is how many kids we had come to school five years later, right? So we've got solid data on the next, well, at that point, it would be next four years because this is the first year. But we're gathering that next set of data right now so we can keep doing that on an ongoing basis and have that solid five years of projections ahead of us.
So because the LaFolks Camden Hills development wasn't as part of that.
Correct.
And it sounds like it's a, it's a, it's an ever-growing study. So will that be included then as we do future years or how is?
For sure. For sure.
We're not going to have to redo the one from last year then because of that, but it's just more?
Yeah, our demographer, you know, we talk with him and he can help add on. Now, again, the challenge with that is his best projections come from the birth trend data that we have. And with a new development, our projections will not be as strong because that's not a place where we have any births right now, right? But, you know, again, he's done this a lot and we have a pretty good idea once we learn more information about the development. But again, there's still a lot of questions up in the air about, again, the homes and what type of homes and price point of, you know, all those kinds of things that we haven't seen that are the kind of things we would work with our demographer to help us make solid projections, right?
I guess the basis of the question was more about, is the data still good that we did last year when it comes to the demographics?
I think the data is still good on everything that we collected it on. Plus, there's this new piece we'll be gathering it on. Yeah, sorry.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda, item four, is public comments. We do have a request for comments from Ms. Lazarus, representing the Geneva Public Library. Welcome.
Close to the microphone. All righty. Well, thank you so much. My name's Christine Lazarus, and I'm the Geneva Public Library Director. I wanted to come by tonight to thank all of you. I know in your packet later tonight is an informational sheet about a potential partnership between our two districts. It's something I've been very excited about and something that Dr. Barrett has worked very happily with me on to try to bring this to your attention. The goal here is to link your students' school IDs to their library cards. So we have currently about over 5,000 library cards for people aged five through 18. So that corresponds pretty well to what your school population is. We know that we see your students. It was really fascinating to hear the gym presentation or the physical PE presentation because we see all of that in the library after school every day. So when they're learning how to cooperate in elementary school, we see that in our programs after school. When they are learning to respect boundaries in middle school, we see that a lot. And then in high school, of course, we see really strong academic performers come to the library. So this would be an opportunity to just make it much easier for students to use the resources when they're outside of your buildings. And I just wanted to assure you that we would be looking at and working with you to provide a secure method for sharing that data. We're hopeful that this would be an opt-out agreement so that we could get the greatest participation possible. And that this would not create new library cards for anybody. I mean, it would if they didn't have a library card. But the goal here would be to take their existing card, which they have no idea what their library number is, right? And just attach that school ID embedded into the records so that they can book study rooms, they can check out online resources, they can walk up to our self-check, type that in, and their parent would have already agreed to that because they already have a library card with us. So we're very excited about this. I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm also happy to invite any of you, all of you, to the library for a tour. I love showing off the library. And a really great time to come is during finals week because you will see all of your high school students there, or at least it feels like it. We actually put out extra chairs that week, usually extra chairs and tables because it gets so busy. So again, thank you so much. We're excited about this partnership, this potential partnership. And we're here to support you and your students however we can. So thank you very much.
And thank you very much. Anybody have any questions at all?
I'm going to chat about it a little bit in my superintendent report too. So if there's comments or questions, certainly could ask them then.
Okay, legislative updates.
I just have one item I wanted to share with everyone. The General Assembly finished their veto session in the wee hours of Friday morning of Halloween. Passed several, well, didn't pass. They did pass through the House and the Senate, and they're now on the governor's desk for signature. But there is one bill I wanted to mention, Senate Bill 243. This is related to FOIA requests. They made some updates to it, and I wanted to highlight two parts of it. One, when an agency receives a FOIA request, the request One, when an agency receives a FOIA request, the request text must be entirely within the body of the electronic submission. For cybersecurity, if someone sends in a FOIA request with an attachment or a hyperlink to a website, that agency is able to go back to the requester and inform them that they need to put all of the information within the body of the email that they sent in. So that was one change that is being requested, and the other one is confirming that a human sent in that FOIA request. Sometimes it seems that maybe it wasn't a human and that the request is just something that has been flagged so that the agency that received the request is able to verify orally or in writing that the Requester is a person. And if they do not hear back from the Requester within 30 days after the public body requests that verification, then the public body may deny the request. So that is on the governor's desk right now, it has not been signed yet, but again, Senate Bill 243, something that the district does do FOIA requests, so I thought I would mention it tonight. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Jackie. Next, superintendent's report. Dr. Barrett.
Yeah, thanks. I want to cover a few important topics with you today. First, as I said earlier, just thank you to all of you. You know, we've been doing our facts and thank you series in my superintendent report, and today, this is thank you to you all. Board Member Day comes up later this week, and American Education Week is coming up as well. Always important, I think, to reiterate, even though I know I say it a lot, I think it's important for the public to hear, these are seven volunteer folks, seven volunteer individuals who are devoting a lot of time and effort and thought and care to bettering our community. 26 years of combined service on our board with a lot of diverse backgrounds and experiences and perspectives, and I know everybody comes to the table well-intended to represent all the different community stakeholders. We were talking about this in the Policy Committee meeting earlier today where we've spent a lot of time as this team, both in board meetings and then in policy, talking about honestly just a few little words and two policies. The reason we've done that is because the people at this table care about representing their community and making sure that the voices of the folks they represent are heard, and I think that's pretty great. So thank you officially to, to all of you for everything that you do. Along those lines and thinking about the various backgrounds of some of our board members, just thank you veterans. Tomorrow is Veterans Day, and there's a cool opportunity at several of our schools for some very cool Veterans Day presentations. We also have a couple of veterans on our board, Larry's one, right, Willard Hooks, who's not here with us tonight, but he's also one, so thank you to our, our veterans. And I especially think it's cool to bring it up because I feel like when I was a kid, that was just a day off school and you just were home. And now, it's not a day off school, our kids are having some very impactful experiences, and I think it's, it's pretty cool that that happens. That's not the remote, or that's the wrong thing there. There we go. Also, school year calendar update. Our Calendar Committee meets tomorrow, so we talked about this at our last meeting, and this kind of a last opportunity to have some insight or feedback here at the board that Shawnet can take and I, I can take to the Calendar Committee when they meet tomorrow. Remembering that kind of this big consideration on the table before we bring a potential draft to you or potential multi-years worth of drafts to you, is this early start versus, you know, starting earlier versus later. And really what that boils down to is a look at, should we be starting school the second week of August, which, you know, staff would report earlier in the week and students would report later in the week, or the third full week of August? So that's where our conversations have evolved and, you know, as we've learned more, you know, we know that obviously, we've heard for a while that, you know, many of our neighbors have that earlier start, they tend to focus on that second week of August. A lot of that has to do with their dual credit programs and some of these cross-district programming variables. Now that being said, we also know that any district in any given year can move off of that, and we know a couple will not be in that second week next year because of various construction needs or projects like that, so we're looking at that too. And, you know, another key factor that we might want to look at as we look at the second or third week is, we've talked about this in previous meetings, potentially a runway, a multi, like two or three years worth of calendars that you, we would bring to you for consideration that would give families a lot of lead time to be thinking about this. So that's kind of where that's at, we're going to talk about that tomorrow. Certainly continue to be open for feedback from the community and from the board on that, and we'll probably be bringing some, something to you for consideration at our next meeting. Any thoughts or anything there at this point? Okay. Then, just to our library card partnership, you know, Christine's right, we've been working in earnest on this, and I think both, both the district and the library district are excited about this. You know, it's, this really goes with our strategic plan in terms of community engagement and working with our community partners. We see the value in this, we see the value, as any of you who've had your kids go through, you know, they know their ID from a very young age because of how it's associated with their email and everything here. We see that being a benefit and the key thing is, you know, lowering barriers to kids being able to access, you know, access all the great resources that are provided at the library. The key question here is that opt-out versus opt-in, and so when we have students, this, this process would eventually start with our, the first year, we would have to do it with our verification process, right, because we would have to capture all the kids currently in the district. But then, once we've done that once, we would only do this for, in our enrollment process as new students come on, right? So as new students come on, families would have an opportunity to, you know, opt-in to having the school district share this data with the library or opt-out. As you heard Christine advocate for, and I think we are in support of this, our recommendation would be to go with the opt-out. The data that we would be sharing would simply basically be name, birthday, their district ID, this is not, you know, highly sensitive data that we might have, and this would all be laid out in our intergovernmental agreement that we would eventually bring to you, but that's why I want to talk about it today because one of our next steps is going to be to bring the IGA to you and for her to take the IGA to her board, and so we want to have that language laid out clearly. So, again, our rationale for supporting the opt-out, which means by default, when you enroll, we would say, we're going to do this partnership with the library and share your, this information with the library unless you collect this box and say you don't want to do that. We think that still provides the choice for all of our families while maximizing participation and lowering those barriers, and again, this isn't really sensitive data that we would be sharing. So if there are strong feelings on that, one way or another, I'd certainly be interested in hearing that from the board and how otherwise I think we would draft up the IGA to represent that, and then you could have more feedback on that after you had an opportunity to take a look at the actual language.
I have one question. The date of birth, is that absolutely necessary because you're giving them the grade level?
I think the, the date of birth is necessary because that's how the library's system tracks the individual between libraries, right? So, yes, at the microphone, please, that's why I didn't want you to turn it off yet. Good question.
It is a good question, and the reason we need the birth date is as a match point because that would be a fairly unique identifier for name and birth date, that that's how your record and our record could sync. We don't use the birth date after that, we, we already have the birth date, quite honestly, in the record, but then that also is something that we use, all library cards expire when a child turns 18 and then it becomes an adult card, so that's another reason we use birth date, but it's really that matching point.
Okay, so I think we will, we'll kind of move forward with that as the language will have our, try to build some of that into the IGA and bring it back to you. So thank you, this has been a lot of work to get to this point, and we're grateful for it. And then last, just to, I want to highlight a little bit about how impressed I've been in the past couple weeks with the way that our school community is trying to support those in need. This is a tough time, and there's some people in the world having a tough time, and it's been great to see our community kind of rally in different ways. We've got a community resources page that we've built up on our website, you know, you just heard a couple, at a couple previous meetings about the work we've been doing in Red Ribbon Week, which included some of these food drives, and there have been other food drives. Our schools have ramped up a lot of school-based supports for folks who might be struggling or have some needs, and we've started to build some pretty cool community partnerships with community organizations that are, are doing things to help support our, our neighbors and friends too. So like this winter coat drive that, that is coming up. So it's just been really cool to see our community kind of rally, we have so many people who want to help and who see that need, and I just kind of wanted to highlight that, I think that's a pretty, pretty great thing. That's all, Larry, thanks.
All right, thank you very much. Next item, Board Dialogue Topics Pending Action Consideration. Item one, the GHS Proposal for New and Modified Courses for 2025-2026. This was presented at the last board meeting, questions can be directed to Shawnet Sims. If anybody has any questions, and... Okay, I would like a motion to approve the modified courses.
So moved.
Second.
Barney.
Aye.
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 Hi. Thank you all. There are no work-study topics for future action consideration right now. Informationally, we have item one, Board Meeting Presentation Schedule, two, FOIA requests and Board Correspondence, three, Suspension Report, and four, Geneva Public Library Partnership, which we've discussed now, and these are information only at this time because no discussion is required. The Consent Agenda, my favorite, item 10. Item one is the Personnel Report, resignations, retirements, leave requests, changes in assignment, full-time equivalent, and new hires. Item two, the Monthly Financial Report. Item three, Paper Records Destruction. Item four, Gifts, Grants, Requests, $2,500 from Ball Horticultural Company for the GHS Horticultural Activities, and if you haven't ever been by the Ball Horticultural Company, they have a lot of beautiful gardens, I highly recommend it if you can get in. In any case, any questions about the Consent Agenda, or do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Item 11, Board Member Comments and Reports. Let's start with Dan this time.
Yeah, just a couple of things, thanks for all the, all the presentations tonight and all the, all the, all the kiddos that came in, I think that was awesome to see those, see all of them. Couple of things that Jackie and I were participating in, the first, very first intergovernmental task force, is that what it's called? Task force, yeah. So, at least for me, and I'll let Jackie talk a little bit about her experience, but for me, I didn't realize how many intergovernmental units there were and how many that were connected with, so that was an eye-opening. It was eye-opening for me in regard to that, that was great, and yeah, thanks for all the, the Board Member Week or the Board Member Day, things that, that came about in tonight's meeting, so appreciate all that. The pay is great.
See if I can get you a raise. I feel the same way. Molly.
I don't have too much, I very much enjoyed the presentations tonight on a personal level, I had my proud mama moment with both of my kiddos presenting. It's really great to spend these little house, we have a few of these houses built in our house right now, and they run around to anybody who's drinking a pop or anything, can I have your tab, can I have your tab, you know, and they're very excited, so it, it warms my heart to know that these are happening across the district and in many different ways, it's not just in my household, so thank you to the teachers who get them excited about these projects, and to our athletes tonight, big congratulations, and just in the spirit of the board members, I, it's an honor to serve with all of you, and I thank you all too for your time volunteering and spending your time doing this important work, and that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Paul?
Yeah, not too much tonight. Want to remind everybody that this Friday, Saturday, and Thursday, or Thursday also is the, the Fall Play at the high school, Romeo and Juliet, and it's at 7:00 PM on all evenings, so if you can have a chance, please attend.
Tickets still available?
Oh, I believe so, yes. I think you can get them at the door.
Okay.
We also had today our Facilities Task Force meeting, and what we're really trying to do is to make sure that we have the infrastructure ready for our strategic plan, and we're going to have a, I think, a quite a long and fruitful discussion next Monday when we have our retreat to discuss this, and not only what we have to do to keep our schools functional for the long term over 10 years, but also the capital that's going to be needed to do this. It's, it's not insignificant, so there could be a lot of long discussions and we have to figure out a way to, to do all of this if we want to maintain the, the performance, I think, that we see from our, our current schools. And I think that's it. I want to thank all of our guests today, it's always great to see the kiddos out here.
Thank you. I guess we can go to Molly, or Steph, sorry.
So I just wanted to give an update on the Policy Committee. We have been hard at work, working through the expulsion policy and the suspension policy to make some adjustments to that based on conversation the board has had. So you will see that come through probably on the next meeting after that was approved, so just wanted to give everyone a heads up on that. You can watch the, the meeting when it's online if you want to see any of our discussion, and then we'll share a little bit about that when that comes through for first reading. Also, just a note for Policy Committee, we do have a lot more policies that will be coming the way over the next couple of months, so it's just that time of year, so just be looking for those as well. I wanted to thank all of our presenters, obviously it was great to see the kids from Heartland, always great to see so many kids you know and including your own kid, but just really nice to, to have them here, it's always fun when the little ones are here. And then great job to our athletes, also great to see cross-country represented and excited for the future of the cross-country teams, and thank you for our PE departments for sharing all the information. I think my kids have found PE valuable in many different ways throughout, throughout their years, whether they're little or they need that break in high school or just a connection point in middle school, so thank you so much for your work. And then I really wanted to thank Sandy for putting together that resource page, that actually has come up quite a few times over the past few days for me, and just people mentioning that, so I know that that's being highlighted and recommended to families who may need that, so thank you for that work, it means a lot for all of our families. And then, thank you to all my fellow board members, I agree, it is an honor to serve with you all, I think that I was sharing during the policy meeting, it's not always about agreeing but about having the discussion and respecting each other to make the best final product, and I really see that happen a lot of times with all of us, so I appreciate everyone for their input in all that we do and really the care that we all put into our work, so thank you all.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thanks. As Dan mentioned, we had our first intergovernmental task force, and he's right, there are a lot of partnerships that we have in our community, and it will be, I think it'll be fun to, to learn a little bit more about how we work together and then provide a little bit of input to Dr. Barrett and from a board perspective and doing this work, so. and then provide a little bit of input to Dr. Barrett and, um, it's from a board perspective and doing this work, so yeah, that was nice to get that started. Thanks to all the presentations tonight, PE, I can tell you, my two in college go to the rec center constantly, they play intermurals, they, they like to move, so they, they had, they have learned that from all their years being in the district, I'm sure. Thank you for that and the other presentations, and then our cross-country members, that is wonderful that we've been able to join um, that statewide group now and then get this type of recognition for our athletes who are running, so congrats to all of them. And that's all I have.
Well, as usual, I don't have to say very much because you guys have said it all so well. I certainly agree with all the comments and I will repeat that this board, and I guess I'm the senior board member, so I can say, this is the best board I've ever worked with. And I mean it sincerely, you all are a pleasure to work with, and so thank you for that. Now, having said that, there are no notices and announcements. We have need to go into executive session to consider matters pertaining to collective negotiations, matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning the salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. Do I hear a motion? Did I miss something?
I should have gone in executive session.
Second.
Aye.
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 Hi. Okay, we'll just take a few minute break here if anybody needs one and then we'll